This time we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Selby?
Present.
Ms. Joy Wilson is absent today. She has a death in the family and attended the funeral out of town. Ms. Brenda Hickam-Botham?
Present.
Mr. Richard Kazook?
Present.
Adoption of the agenda.
The only thing to add to the agenda, we're going to recognize Mr. Knight here during the public comment period, but since the agenda went out to the media, we have added an agenda item. This is not a special call board meeting. I want to make that clear. This was always on the scheduled list of the board meetings. We always have two in June. But we have added the use of Russell County High School Gymnasium for an alternate Lake Fest concert location. Mayor Hinton called this morning and just asked permission to use the gym if the weather was too severe tomorrow evening for the Aaron Tipton concert. So that's on there, Mr. Kazook, for the board to consider. But since that, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I make the motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Jill Wilson is absent. Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
We know you're here.
Okay. Public comment? Any public comments this time? Yes, sir, Ms. Jill.
I'd like to make a comment. I want to apologize first because it has nothing to do with school. I wanted to thank all of the men, and I assume there's women who walked over this last week. Clary Grove, we took story power.
Power, yes.
On my property, we had 30-plus trees.
Oh, wow.
I hear you saying.
The vast, how fast they were got in. We got power outage last night. I just think...
Do recognition.
Yes.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Well, we have a very special presentation. We've asked Mr. Knight and Mr. Wolford to come up here to the front. Mr. Knight was a... Do you want to announce how many years you drove a bus for us, Mr. Knight?
Uh, 50 years.
That's right. 50 years that Mr. Knight drove a bus for Russell County schools. And he was nominated and received the STACK, well, that's the Student Transportation Association of Kentucky, lifetime service award to Mr. Merrell Knight for years of dedication for pupil, to pupil transportation in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So that is almost unheard of to have that recognition. I think Mr. Wolford's going to say a few words as well. Mr. Knight, we sure do appreciate you for all your years of service, and we're going to miss you. One fine man, awesome driver. Just so proud of you. So proud of you.
Appreciate it.
Yes. When I started at Jamestown many years ago, you were one of the drivers there. That's been a quarter of a century year, but before that time, you've driven a quarter more. So we're just so very, so very proud of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All I have to say is Merrell's a great driver. Merrell represents everything that it is to be a bus driver. He loves the kids. He's dedicated to the job. I could, I could probably count on one hand the amount of times he's called me and said, "I need a day off." If Merrell needs a day off, he's sick and has a doctor appointment, or he has to take his wife to him. But Merrell started in 1969 with the board, and he's got a little over 50 years if he told the truth.
Yeah, he did.
Merrell's 90 years old now, and he gets around better than I do. There's a big joke at school, there at the bus garage, that the guys would say, "Well, I hope I'm in Merrell shape when I get to be 90." And a few of the guys finally said, "Well, I wish I was in Merrell shape now."
I wish I had Mr. Knight's posture right now. Standing there straight as an arrow.
Merrell milked cows for years and years and ran a farm, ran a dairy there. He's a member of the Nazarene Church in Jamestown, well-known member of the community, well-respected. Just a fabulous bus driver, safe bus driver. And before I forget this, he was a member of the 7th Infantry Division, veteran of the Korean War.
Yep.
And the greatest compliment I could pay to him, and it's the greatest compliment I could pay to any bus driver, is I would trust my kids to ride with me.
I would.
And I would with Merrell. But Merrell's done a good job.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm glad that I drove it long and didn't get no kids hurt.
Absolutely.
I tried to board down for him. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you so much. Well-deserved.
Thank you.
Well-deserved.
I guess that's all of it.
Unless you want to do anything else.
I...
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Appreciate you. That's, that's the good stuff right there.
That's your, my big thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills and the school activity fund reports. Of course, we already have the treasurer's report and things like that at the regular monthly meeting. If there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
Motion?
I'll make a motion as is presented.
Second.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is 2023 Russell County Schools Policy and Procedures Update Final Reading.
Well, at the first meeting in June, we had the first reading for our policy updates for the 23-24 school year. You all are well aware that the Kentucky School Board Association provides this service for us. The copies were provided for you at the June 19 meeting. No changes have been made to any of the policies and procedures since the first reading. So I recommend approval of the policy procedure updates for the Russell County Board of Education. That will put them in effect after the second reading today.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
No, Ms. Brenda seconded.
Oh, I did?
Mr. Selby made it.
My mind's this weak.
Next item on the agenda is Russell County Bass Fishing Team Funding Request.
Well, you all know how we've had such a successful bass fishing team for just a number of years now. Ms. Melissa Boles and Mr. Shannon Stevens are here representing the team. Shannon being the coach, and Ms. Melissa as the treasurer, grandson there with her. So they're here to ask for a funding request to help them at the Nationals in later, in Anderson, South Carolina. So who are both, or whoever wants to speak?
Most of you all know that I'm Shannon Stevens, bass fishing coach. I'm not a coach in this state. And just to give you all a little bit of history of the team, a little junior team that was going to be the first, July 16, '17, is when the practice fishing started. Over the past three years, counting this year, the state of Kentucky has sent seven teams to Nationals across the state of Kentucky. Four of the seven is coming from Michigan.
That's pretty outstanding numbers, just right there.
Well, for the last three years, Russell County has been competing every year in the Nationals. And, you know, they're one of the most known middle school teams across the state of Kentucky. You know, everybody is trying to compete with these kids. And, you know, from the anglers, from the parents, to boat captains, to the school system, you know, these kids have grown tremendously. And I thank you all for starting the bass fishing program. Nine years ago, I think it was, I got involved with it seven years ago with my son. He's a senior. You know, him and his partner, both has fished more national tournaments than any team in the state of Kentucky. Once they finish their career, end of July, they'll have finished, fished eight national championships together. You know, and I mean, most schools love to get at least one team to fish, you know, a national tournament. But, you know, we've been blessed at this school with multiple kids before, you know, with the former coach of Coach Roy. But you take the national team of Blaine and Blaine Smith and Tate Reynolds, they fixed a junior national championship. They're going to fish a high school national championship this year. But we have been self-funding and taking care of all of our stuff for the past four years. You know, we have sent three teams to Nationals for the last four years. We have been able to raise the money and be able to fund that. This year, we've got five teams going to Nationals. I mean, it's, it's never happened before. And I mean, the kids have done amazing. But with the timeframe, we just can't raise enough money to get the kids to Nationals. And what we're hoping to do is have the board to help pay for the two junior teams to go to Nationals. We can pay for the two high school teams to go to Nationals. And I've got, you know, Melissa has broke all this down as far as, you know, the gas going to and from, the boat gas per week, the food allowance and lots. You know, if you look for the round trip, it is 534 miles. You know, if you look at what the state average is, 53 cents a mile, you know, she's got it broke down at 45 cents a mile. That's $240 per team. We get there and get back. Boat gas, you know, count the oil and everything, we're looking at, it's going to cost about $50 a day per gas per tournament. You know, for the practice fishing plus the tournament, they're going to spend about $250 in gas and boat oil. Food allowance for three people, you know, you're looking at about $700 per, per week for them to go. It's $100 a day. When you break it down, it's like $11 per kid per minute, you know, if you want to break it all down that way. That also pays for their ice. It also pays for ice and stuff for their boat daily. The lodging is going to cost them about $1400 per team. And the total comes up to, it's 28, roughly $2,800 for lodging, $714 for food, $250 for gas, $240 for the gas for the round trip. For everything totaled up, it's about $1,180 is what we broke it down to. We just got back from across Wisconsin. We spent a little over $2500. You know, the lodging was cheaper up there. It cost more gas to get there. But, you know, we competed up there well than Lucas did. In Nationals, you know, they fished in the top 10% of the country, and they're in about the top 3.5% to 4% of the country, you know. I mean, I feel that Russell County's bass fishing program has represented the county well. The county has really supported the team, you know, with their jerseys, with their fundraisers. And we have been very blessed to be a part of a great program that you all have started years ago, when we just want these kids to be able to enjoy the rewards of their hard work. With that, I'm trying to give about the $5,000 to these kids to Nationals.
The bass fishing team is certainly on the map and well-respected throughout the state. And there's never, you know, I appreciate what all you all do because it's, there's never an issue. We don't, we don't deal with issues with the bass fishing team. The, and I do, as you've said, Mr. Stevens, I do appreciate this community's support as well because they have been tremendous. But that also goes because I think it's, it's been nice and well by you all. And the boosters have been very good with it. So what's the board's opinion?
I'll make a motion to give them the minimum.
I'll second.
Vote.
If you want to do this, he said five, but right here, their total is 5,180.
251.
5,180. Okay. So you made it, Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
One thing I want to just bring up too is that a lot of people don't understand, you all furnished the boats and trucks to do this.
We furnished the boats and trucks.
And all the equipment.
You know, what we have been able to do since I took over is, you know, with the booster club, the way that it is set up, the kids have a one-time fee of $150. It pays for their jerseys, their boat captain services. It pays for their Kentucky Bass Nation dues. If they're in high school, it pays for their SAF dues, be able to fish, you know, the regents and stuff with high school. The kids are out no other month. We pay for the gas for the tournament. We pay for their entry fees for the tournament. We pay for their fuel and their truck and boat. You know, if we go to Kentucky Lake, we pay for their food while they're there. We pay for their motel room while they're there.
Right.
And, you know, we could not do that without the support of this great community helping this, these kids out. But I do very, very appreciate everything you all done for us. And the kids will really enjoy it in the coming weeks.
Yep. A once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
That's correct.
We appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And on a side note, I am one of the boat captains, and it is rough. You're fishing in October, and it is 40 degrees and pouring down the rain, and you're out there for eight hours.
And the fishing goes on.
The fishing goes on.
They fish their little hearts out. I sit under an umbrella, trying not to freeze today.
And the fog and everything else.
Yeah, true. Don't call it off for weather, do they?
No. Very few times over the seven years they've ever called it off this way.
If they lighten, it would be the big thing, wouldn't it?
Most of the time, if it's lightning, they have a delay. The only time that they've ever called it off is one due to the thunderstorm at Kentucky Lake this year. You know, and they give it 50-mile air winds going through, they cut, canceled that tournament. But I think it's the second year we was involved. We're supposed to be at Harrington in March. We got the two inches of snow and ice the night before the tournament. So they canceled there. Kind of hard to put the boat in the water.
One thing too that I did check with the tourist commission, just to see whenever we are housing a tournament here, revenue-wise, what does it bring into the community?
Yep.
And she gave me between $40,000 and $50,000.
Well, I know it.
Her tournament.
Her turn.
Yep. Lot of return on the investment.
Lot of return.
Yeah.
Lot of return.
You all make it easy.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss and approve purchase of a district vehicle, 2019 Ford Expedition, 66,000 miles, with purchase price of $32.5. Is there a motion?
There is.
I'll make a motion, purchase.
I'll second it.
I'll third it.
Vote.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
One other thing I'd like to add to that. I wish we would put Russell County Schools on the side.
It was.
We can do that.
Yeah. Okay. Next item is BG fours, contract closeouts, Russell County High School, ANC paving and drainage project.
Of course, this, this is not a change of money or anything like that. This is just literally closed-out documents. And to be honest with you, they kind of got lost in the shuffle, or I would have already brought them to you. We do a BG fours for each contractor when they close out a project. This has to do with the high school paving ANC asphalt project that we did a year and a half ago or so. Again, there's no money change hands. This is literally just saying that more or less that all the work is done by each contractor. So we have the Gaddy Shamrock LLC for the package 220022 paving and Piles Excavating Incorporated 0020 for the earthwork. So I recommend approval of the BG fours for the Russell County High School ANC paving and drainage project.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the architectural firm, Russell County High School Science Lab renovations.
So through the board's authorization and advertisement for letters of interest for architectural firms regarding Russell County High School Science Lab renovations was published in the Times Journal. Letters of interest were received from the following: Klopfeltzer, Somoker, GRW, and Chairman Carter Barnhart. All three letters are attached for your review. So I was pleased that we had three letters of interest. Just as a reminder and for the audience, the fee schedules for any of like engineering, architectural services, CM, all those things are set by regulation by KDE. So that's not really the issue. You just want to pick the firm that, that you feel really comfortable with and can do a good job. In my opinion, Chairman Carter Barnhart, they're our current architect. They were responsible for our most recent remodel at the, at the high school when we did the ceiling and the HVAC and the lighting and everything back in 2015. And then most recently, they did the new ATC, and then they're, they're working on for their renovation of our old ATC. Having said that, they're just real familiar with their, with their projects and with us. And I would, I would recommend that we continue with our current architect, Chairman Carter Barnhart, and select them to do the Russell County High School Science Lab renovations. So whomever we agree, you all agree to choose, the next step would be after this, is they would get cost estimates and then bring it back to us, to the board for approval, and we would have a BG one moving forward. This is a small project, so I didn't want to, I didn't feel any need to have, or we'd had to do a waiver anyway, to have a construction management for this project. So it'll just be bid out, and the architect will work through us with that for the, for the trades and everything that go along with it. I think we're just doing a lot of casework, but there'll be electricity work and plumbing and gas and all that in addition to the labs at that, at the floor. So and again, this is using the stimulus funds to do this. So I recommend Chairman Carter Barnhart, that's our current architect, be selected as the architectural firm for Russell County High School Science Lab renovation.
I'll make a motion to get it effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And just as a good example, you know, this is advertised local in the Arab Times Journal. That's the regs to do that with. But then all these firms have companies that just scour, you know, local newspapers. And that's there. We got three just by advertising our local newspaper, which is the reg. But then we have three firms, you know, two that we've not worked with in a long time, maybe not one of them we've not worked with ever. And they still find out about that because they have companies that they contract with to do that.
Next item is contracts, memorandum of agreements.
So we have the Green River Regional Educational Cooperative for Occupational Therapy Services for the 23-24 school year. Our, our co-op employs an occupational therapist, and actually we would split this position with another school district. Our current occupational therapist is, is really probably exceeding caseload to what she's allowed to work with students in special need that have OT needs or occupational therapy needs. And this would provide some relief and some additional services for students for two days a week. And then we have our annual agreement with Lake Cumberland Action Head Start and the Russell County Board of Education, and then includes the special education services. So I recommend approval of the contracts and/or memorandums of agreements that's been approved by the board attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, student shortened school day and/or week.
So local boards of education must approve requests for students to have a shortened school day or week. The decision is determined by the needs of the student. The documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. And I know, it sounds like a broken record because you all are very familiar with these. It's retroactive to the date that the committee meets to, to approve the shortened school day for a student. And then this is just a series of paperwork to go to the state. So I recommend a shortened school day and/or week for the following student IDs, S23-011, and the necessary documentation is forwarded to the Kentucky Department of Education.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Next item is executive session, superintendent evaluation, KRS 61.810-1K preliminary discussions.
So that statute permits boards of education to go into executive session for preliminary discussion of superintendent Ford's annual evaluation. You all have the documentation that was attached and given to you last time. I recommend we go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.810 subsection 1K for preliminary discussion of superintendent Ford's evaluation.
Is there a motion?
I'll make. Yeah. Yes.
Vote.
Two seconds.
Second.
Two seconds. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Selby made. Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I recommend the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
12:37.
I need a motion?
I'll make, I'll make motion to resume open.
Second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is superintendent Ford's summative evaluation. We went through and we did Mr. Ford's summative evaluation. There are seven categories or standards that we, we rate him on. First one is strategic leadership. We give him an exemplary rating. Second one is instructional leadership, also an exemplary. The next one is cultural leadership, also exemplary. Number four is human resource leadership, exemplary. Managerial leadership, exemplary rating. Collaborative leadership, exemplary rating. And influential, excuse me, influential leadership, exemplary rating. Mr. Ford has an exemplary rating in all categories. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept his address.
Second.
I'll second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Good, Mr. Kazook. Extremely appreciative of that, very humbled by the, by the board's vote of confidence with that evaluation. But I want to, I want to just make it very, very clear. That is because of this board, of you all certainly, our administrators, our, our faculty staff, our administration. This community's support is second to none. I'm in a lot of meetings, you all, and I've said this time and time before. The way this community rallies around this school district does not happen everywhere. And I know this district's about doing right things for kids. And again, that, I'm humbled and appreciative of that evaluation, but that is, I want to say that's a reflection upon the great people that we work with, including the boards. Thank you all very much.
Next item is use of Russell County High School Gymnasium for an alternate Lake Fest concert location.
So Mayor Hinton with the city of Jamestown has asked for the Russell County High School Gymnasium to be used as an alternate location for the Lake Fest concert scheduled for July of 1, 2023. That's tomorrow evening in case of inclement weather. I've talked to Mr. Hoover about it. He has no legal objections to it. This, I've talked to our insurance agent about it, and they also insure the city of Jamestown as well. And the city of Jamestown has a policy that covers city events wherever they're at, just like we do with school events wherever we're having them. So they are, they are both, so we're good on that part. And want to be a good, a good community partner with the city of Jamestown or any of our, our partners that have requested of this. And Maintenance was happy to jump on board and could get the stage set up in preparation for tomorrow, just because we couldn't do that on a whim tomorrow. It takes a little bit to get that stage set up. So I'm, I'm happy to do this and happy to fight for this. This will only happen if it's a, you know, it's a thunderstorm, pretty significant rainfall. Mayor Hinton said if it was just a misting rain or something, they would go ahead there in Jamestown. But just appreciate the city and all their county and city governments. So we're, I'm happy to recommend that the Russell County High School's Gymnasium for the city of Jamestown's Lake Fest concert, concert be granted in the event of, of inclement weather.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Hickam-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is personnel reports. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Reports.
So, uh, Michelle Roy, teacher at Russell Springs Elementary Schools retiring, Thelma Scott, uh, Russell Springs Instructional Assistant retiring. Brittany Ginn hired as a Russell Springs Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Derek Aaron hired, Russell County Middle School Exceptional Education Teacher. Sean Coffey is resignation to Russell County Middle School Assistant Golf Coach. Ryan Harris resignation, resi- resigned as Russell County High School Exceptional Education Teacher. Travis Miller hired as Russell County High School Golf Coach. Chris Whitlock hired as Russell County High School Chemistry Integrated Science Teacher and the High School Assistant, uh, Boys Basketball Coach. John Chewie hired, Russell County High School Freshman Basketball Coach, and Skylar Stapleton hired as Russell County High School Assistant Football Coach.
Next item on the agenda is Public Comments.
Mr. Union live.
Mr. Union live. You ain't have any say? No? Brenda?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Old favorite?
Old favorite. Can you never shout? Hope I've got TV when I get home.
The, uh, I will mention this, and I, I would, I'd forget, but before our next July meeting, if we could have a special meeting at, um, and I can talk with you later, Mr. Kazook, to officially schedule it. But like at three-thirty, four o'clock, the architects and the construction management and our bonding agent would like to, um, meet with us regarding the old ATC and where they're at with those plans, and just have some time, just informally, you know, sit around some tables like we've done before and talk about. And there's some decisions, uh, need to be made, uh, concerning the old ATC, so if everyone's available to meet prior to the regular July meeting, we could, we could do that, just to put that on the radar.
You mean the same day with your third?
Yes, yeah. Your son? Okay, thank you.